Hello.
We've got our useless leader up there, Kelvin's there, so.
Eileen, how many commissioners are in the room with you?
We have two, we are in a forum.
Okay. Okay, we have a quorum. Okay, we'll give it one more minute to thirty-one, Eileen.
Okay.
Say, Eileen, I just want to make sure you can see the PowerPoint without notes on it. Okay, thanks.
It's working great. Good evening, the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four Watcom County Planning Commission meeting is called to order. I'll call the roll, please let me know if you're there. Kelvin Barton, that's me, I'm here, Atul Deshmani. Atul Deshmani. Sanita Eisenberg.
Here, present.
Jim Hansen. Jim Hansen. Stephen Jackson.
Present.
Julie Jefferson. Julie, I see your name on there, but the volume's not coming through. I'm going to put Julie down as president. Frank James, here. Dominic Misery.
Here.
And Scott Van Dalen.
Here.
All right, please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now it's time for department update, and that's going to be our planning director, Mark Personius. Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's nice to be back, it's been a while. Just want to say that, say it's a pleasure to see you guys again, some of you I haven't met yet, I don't think, for a while. But I'll be brief, as you know, of course, we lost Steve. He had moved back to Eastern Washington, his mother turned eighty and needs a little bit of care, so he's moving his family back there, so we're gonna miss him a lot, and you're gonna get me in the interim in his place anyway, so. We, just a quick update for you on some things. We've got now, in addition to Steve, well, total of four open positions, so we've got two fire inspector positions that are open, and then assistant director position and a permit planner position, so we've got some work to do on the recruitment side. The council will be hearing the budget and hearing on next Tuesday, along with the capital improvements program that you guys recommended. That will be up for hearing and discussion next Tuesday on the nineteenth. Council is currently reviewing the Senate Bill fifty-two ninety regs you guys recommended, as well as the Bellingham UGA HII zone regulatory changes and the open space applications, I think. Open space is on the agenda for the council meeting next Tuesday, and I think we'll have introduced the Bellingham HII interim changes also Tuesday for hearing on, I think, December December third, I believe. And same thing for the Senate Bill fifty-two ninety changes, our permitting review timeline changes. The only, and the last thing I've got, just to let you know, on the permitting side, we'll be opening up a public portal for the public to, into the intergub system to check on permit status and pay invoices, and we'll slowly but surely be adding case types to, so folks can actually make applications into that system directly over the next six to eight months or so, so, so that's gonna be good news as we move forward with that stuff in the next year. And that's what I've got for the department update, once you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Mark? Hi, thank you, Mark.
I do, see my hands up?
Oh, no, I don't actually see one here yet.
There you go, I'm sorry I'm late, I have computer problems.
Oh, now I'm seeing you, there you go, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Hanson.
Question, is there any impact of the executives' hiring freeze on the positions you need to fill?
Yeah, good question, Jim, there is, we just, procedurally, we have to go back and request to refill those positions, and we have had authority to do that so far granted by the executive. We are talking internally about what our needs are in the immediate, in the short term and in the intermediate term going into next year, especially with fifty-two ninety and our shortened permitting timelines, that they're gonna be a challenge, and so we may look at possibly reclassing some of those open positions or reorging a little bit to make sure that we've got the best things that we can get out of those two positions, so, thanks for the question.
Hey, any other questions for Mark? All right, Eileen, would you take over public comment? Eileen Kogut is our planning commission coordinator.
Yes, welcome to the meeting, this meeting is being broadcast live, the audio is being recorded and will be posted to the county website. As noted on our website, members of the public may watch the meeting or join online or by phone. During the open public comment session, speakers may not speak to the items that are scheduled on the agenda for public hearing tonight. We are talking about the population and employment growth projections, so that'll be our public hearing. If you would like to provide public comment at this time, we will take comments from those in the room first. Please come up to the podium and print your full name on the sign-up sheet. If you are participating remotely and would like to speak, virtually raise your hand, we will get to you shortly. If using the internet, press the hand icon to raise your hand, or if calling it by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Would anyone in the room wish to provide public comment at this time? Sure. You're, I will have three minutes on the screen. Now please state your name for the record.
Mike Kaufman, County resident, and I haven't been in front of the planning commission in a long time, I understand that this is twenty-five, we're coming up for comprehensive plan review. And I would like to talk about that, one is, you know, I would say to everybody, champion, you know, a chapter of the comprehensive plan. Anyone here in the meeting, in the beginning nineteen ninety-one, I was there when the comprehensive plan was introduced of the Washington legislation, and it represents to me the public's vision, your voice on matters that are important to us, to the public. It's a legal document, and it's kind of lost its way after twenty-five or almost thirty years, I'd say, thirty-plus years. It needs new energy, and it needs to be inserted into the comp plan. My fingerprints are all over chapter five of the utility chapter of the comprehensive plan from the beginning, and, you know, I chaired a committee after the gas line explosion under the utility chapter, representing and talking about SC two, talking about the GSX gas pipeline, Enron. In that, we learned about the franchise agreement, and in the franchise agreement is where the public has its inserted control over public ways of way. And in those fingerprints that I put in there, let's look to the Cascade Gas, trying to renew their twenty-five-year franchise agreement. And in there, we had language for the franchise agreement, and to scrutinize the franchise, my word, that was inserted, and hey, we got a seven-year franchise agreement out of that, so the comprehensive plan does work, in my opinion, if you put the effort into it to make it so, you know, there's SEPA, there's NEPA, yeah, there's FERC, and there's EFSEC. And there was a GSX gas pipeline that does not exist in Watcom County, because of my work with the comprehensive plan and the utility chapter, it is in Canada and stayed in Canada. And so, again, champion a chapter. Focus like a laser on a specific topic. And I talked about in my life, three specific equations I try to work with, the twenty-twenty, the eighty-twenty, I'm coming down to the end. And I would say to the elders, champion a youthful person to help you as you work through the comprehensive plan, thank you for your time, appreciate the moment.
Anyone else in the room who should speak at this time? Please write your name and state your name for the record.
Sure. Matt Berry, so, good evening, my name is Matt Berry, I'm chair of the Birch Bay Corporation Association and contributor to establishing the Birch Bay Community Advisory Committee, which the county council will formally introduce next Tuesday, November nineteenth. That advisory committee developed through eighteen months of dedicated effort aims to foster more effective communication and information sharing between Watcom County and the Birch Bay community. I am here to express my opposition to furthering expanding Blaine city limits into Birch Point without first engaging in thorough discussions that include Watcom County, the city of Blaine, and the Birch Bay community. The potential development of Birch Point has been a longstanding topic of interest and concern for our community, so before any decisions are made, it is essential that Birch Bay residents are fully informed and involved in this discussion. Without early engagement, the Birch Bay community may respond more negatively to these proposals. Many residents, particularly those in nearby Birch Bay Village, are currently unaware of these proposed changes and would likely appreciate the opportunity to contribute their input before any decisions are finalized. So in short, I respectfully request that any expansion into Birch Point include input from all affected communities, thank you very much.
Anyone else in the room who should speak at this time? Seeing no one in the room which is to speak, I see one hand raised, Kelvin, Rick Eggers, you were to speak at this time.
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Rick Eggers of the Watcom Environmental Council, and one of the co-authors of the letter that WEC sent to you two days ago on November twelfth. Members of the commission and staff, thank you for this opportunity to comment and your time and effort dedicated in preparing the comp plan update. I know comp stands for comprehensive, but it could just as well stand for complicated, as the process of preparing comp plans and updates is nothing if not complex. We know you know that, but we want you to recognize how much we appreciate what you're doing, and that we recognize how difficult it is. And we're not here to make things more difficult. Quite the contrary, we hope to provide our collective experience and expertise for your benefit. That is exactly why we prepared our November twelve letter. I will not repeat or summarize the letter, though I urge you to read it if you haven't already. The remainder of my comments will focus on the conclusions we hope you draw from our letter. If you take away only one thing from our letter, and we hope you take away more than one, let that one thing be the procedural mandates in SEPA and the GMA. They must be followed and must be followed early on, not after growth estimates are chosen, but before, so that the planning goals detailed in RCW
That'll be my order.
Thirty-six seventy-eight point zero two zero.
Hold on, would you please hold on for a minute, go ahead, Commissioner Misery.
Yeah, I just want to make sure this is appropriate for the open session and not to be held at the public hearing.
Oh, yes, I I'm not sure the name of the person speaking, but in the public comment period, we'll be having a public hearing a little bit, and, and some of the comments that you're making should be held for that for that public hearing, and there'll be a matter of record for, for that. Is there anything else that you would like to talk about that doesn't involve what our topic is, our public hearing and our topic for the evening? And, and Rick, did you hear?
I'm unmuted now.
Did you hear me okay?
I heard you, I didn't realize I'd been muted, nor did I realize there were two public comment periods, so in the later public comment period.
Oh, great, Rick, that would be awesome, that's great, I appreciate your graciousness.
No problem.
Right, go ahead, Eileen.
There are no other hands raised virtually, Kelvin.
All right, and so now be the time for commissioner comments, are there any commissioner comments? Let's see here, just, let me come this way, any commissioner comments? Seeing none, we will move Seeing none, we will move along to the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
And and, um, I I will take that motion, but I did want to point one little correction um, as as I understood it, and that is where we talked about a staff creating a document um, that refers to the importance of the commission and and that's really important. One thing that I asked for at that time is I would like um to to be kind and more informal document as well that, um, and I talked about that, that would just give some of the things that are not conducting the meeting, but things that would be beneficial to new members coming in, such as when members come in from some of the committees where um, their discussions are roundtable and that when you come to the planning commission, it becomes more of Robert's rules of order. And I thought about an informal document like that along with it. Are you okay with adding that?
Yes.
Okay, commissioners, are there any objections to that? Okay. Um, are there any other uh comments or Commissioner Jefferson, would you continue with your motion?
Motion to approve, uh, motion to approve the minutes with the um change um noted by Kelvin.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Ben Daylin.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Mosseri.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. So tonight's meeting topic in public hearing is about the population and employment projections um, associated with Waukam County Comprehensive Plan Update in urban growth area. And, um, the, um, presenter of the meeting topic will be Matt Amit and will have a public hearing and as well as a presentation and a work session. So Matt, go ahead.
All right, for the record, my name is Matt Amit, representing Planning and Development Services from Waukam County. And so tonight we're talking about preliminary population and employment projections for the urban growth areas or U G A's and rural areas of the county, rural and resource lands. And we would like to provide some introductory comments and then um, the cities and the county would present their initial or preliminary proposals. So the Growth Management Act requires certain counties and cities within those counties to engage in planning for future population and employment growth. The GMA requires Waukam County and the cities to review and revise their respective comprehensive plans and development regulations by December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Uh, and the GMA specifically requires review of urban growth areas. Um, and the U G A's must have sufficient area and densities to accommodate population, housing and employment growth through the new planning period, which will be twenty twenty three through twenty twenty, or excuse me, twenty forty five. So the county, in partnership with the cities, hired a consulting firm to develop a kind of initial uh population and employment growth projections. And the full title of the consultant report is on the screen there. We we call it the technical report for brevity. So this report was issued by Leland Consulting Group in May twenty twenty four. And the consultant made a presentation to Planning Commission on May ninth, twenty twenty four relating to that technical report. So the technical report includes preliminary low, middle and high growth projections for the county as a whole and for urban growth areas and for the rural and resource lands outside of U G A's. And so the tech report, uh, countywide growth projections are distributed to U G A's and rural areas based upon historical percentage shares. So for example, Frendale had twelve point eight percent of the countywide population growth over the last ten years. So they were assigned twelve point eight percent of the population growth going forward. So the tech report kind of represents a starting point for public input and discussions by planning commissions and elected officials um, to develop more policy-based growth projections. So each city in the county developed a preliminary population and employment growth proposals, taking into account things like, you know, established goals for the cities and county, uh, infrastructure, land capacity, things like that. So this table shows the tech report growth projections, um, which are the three rows to the left uh, of numbers. And it also shows the city and county population growth proposals, and those are in bold. So the preliminary city and county proposals um would represent growth of sixty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty eight people over the twenty two year planning period. Over the previous twenty two years, from two thousand and one to two thousand and twenty three, the county grew by sixty four thousand, eight hundred and twenty people, so a little bit below um, that uh future projection. So the state OFM middle projection, the state's most likely projection, is for growth of fifty six, nine fifteen over the new planning period. I think part of that is that the state is projecting that natural increase will go negative after twenty thirty five. There'll be more deaths than births. That's been kind of a a stable factor in our population growth. So it's all going to be migration after that through at least twenty forty five, um, which can be quite um variable from year to year or time period to time period. Anyway, each jurisdiction will talk about their thought process for their growth proposals um in their presentations in a few minutes. So the state legislature uh passed House Bill twelve twenty in the twenty twenty one session to address kind of the housing crisis. And this bill um indicates that the State Department of Commerce will provide the number of housing units needed for each jurisdiction. So in order to do this, the state developed what they called the Housing for All Planning Tool, or HAPT. And these are basically spreadsheets that are used by local jurisdictions and our consultant uh modified those spreadsheets to address a number of things um, such as the spreadsheets or the original state HAPT was geared towards cities and we planned by U G A's, so they they modified it in that way. Also, the original state HAPT didn't really recognize that there are limitations under GMA on rural housing. And so our consultant kind of um modified the tool to recognize that. Now, the state did come out like a year later with a method C, they call it in the HAPT um, that recognized that. But it was, our consultant had basically already done it for us, so. And they they coordinated, the consultant coordinated with um the state and the methodologies were uh pretty consistent. So the overall countywide population figure is inserted in the HAPT, in the spreadsheet. Um, and it calculates the number of housing units that are needed at the various income bands. And there's several, you know, low income bands, moderate income, you know, high income for each urban growth area and the rural areas outside U G A's. Um, so that countywide population figure has implications for how much housing will be needed uh, to be accommodated in each U G A or rural areas. If the countywide projection is lower, then fewer housing units need to be planned for in each, in each U G A. If it's higher, then more housing units would need to be um planned for and accommodated. So this table um shows the housing units needed for each U G A in the rural and resource areas based upon the countywide uh population projection in the preliminary city and county growth proposal, which uh we'll talk about tonight. Um, and again, if that's uh increased or decreased, then the housing would also change. Okay, so uh moving on to employment. This table shows the tech report growth projections um, in the left-hand, three columns of numbers and also the city and county growth proposals. So the preliminary city and county proposals shown in bold would represent about um, thirty two thousand, three hundred and forty two jobs over the twenty two year planning period. The tech report middle is for employment growth of twenty four, two seventy eight over that same period. And again, each jurisdiction will talk about their thought process for those um growth proposals in their presentations. So the county is preparing an environmental impact statement for the comp plan update. The E I S will include four growth alternatives shown on the screen. And these provide a range of population and employment projections that we will be studied. So ultimately, uh, the county council will adopt growth projections in the updated comp plan that is within the range of alternatives in the E I S um, in the, in the final county comp plan. So alternative two, which was developed by the cities and the county, would, will be presented by the planners this evening. Okay, um, then we have this uh non-binding, multi-jurisdictional resolution. And in the twenty sixteen comp plan update process, the county council approved a non-binding, multi-jurisdictional resolution with initial growth projections, and this was adopted in twenty fourteen, a couple of years before the comp plan was adopted. Um, in the twenty twenty five update process, the county and cities have formulated population and employment growth proposals for consideration by the planning commission tonight. Um, and then, um, the county council would consider a non-binding resolution with these preliminary numbers. So the non-binding resolution concept was brought forward by some of the small cities in the twenty sixteen update process. Kind of out of concern that they were um spending a lot of money on things like capital facility planning and wanted at least some early indication of what the other jurisdictions were thinking. And, you know, fully realizing, understanding that the growth proposals may be different in the final comp plan. So that was kind of the origin of it. So as mentioned, each city and the county will make presentations this evening regarding their respective preliminary or initial population and employment growth proposals. Um, and this is the order of the presentation, starting with Bellingham, going through the other cities, and then the county will uh, present on our uh three urban growth areas that are not associated with the city and the rural lands also. So that concludes our introductory remarks. So next, uh, each jurisdiction would present their population and employment growth proposals. Then the hearing would be opened up for public comment. And then the Planning Commission work session. And we wanted to say that, you know, we know that there's a lot of material being presented here. And Planning Commission could continue review of these proposals to the next meeting in December if more time is needed. So we're, we're totally open to that. What's that? And before each jurisdiction presents their preliminary preliminary growth proposals, um, we would entertain any questions from commissioners?
So, uh, Commissioner Hanson has a question for you. Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
I'm just interested in the whole, uh, where, how we account for growth in the cities, because my understanding of the Growth Management Act and subsequent legislation is to encourage growth in the core cities, not just in the U G A. So is there a whole other uh subset of growth that is being assigned to the core cities? And and if if so, how do, how do these things harmonize with each other?
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, under GMA, the urban growth area includes the city and the surrounding area that's been designated as U G A. So when we say the Bellingham U G A includes the area within the city limits and the area surrounding the city limits, it's been designated by the county.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Right. Um, excuse me, Matt, sorry. Uh, I just wanted to point out that I'm here, but my name was showing up as your name, so I've changed it to my name now. I don't know why that happened on the Zoom, on the Zoom link. It was double Matt, but I am here.
Okay, so this is Andrew. He's with Leland Consulting Group uh, for any technical questions, you know, on population employment and their report earlier and so forth, so. Okay, so Chris Behe from the city of Bellingham uh would be the first to present.
All right, thanks, Matt. I'm going to see if I can share my screen here. All right, can you see that okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to present Bellingham's proposal this evening. I'm going to run through some, uh, just a few background slides, um, illustrating recent uh regulatory changes and development in Bellingham and then, um, cover our concurrent growth and then step through, uh, just real briefly, a couple of slides illustrating um, the Bellingham specific pieces of some of what Matt has just shown you with respect to the uh, the city's preliminary growth proposal, so, um. All right. This is a map showing the um entire Bellingham urban growth area, including the city limits in yellow. Um, and then the kind of brownish, uh, unincorporated growth area around the edge. There are a couple of uh urban growth area reserve areas at the north and south end with crosshatching. And then the brown um crosshatching that you can kind of see on the northerly part of the city and a few other places around town is the area that is the area that Bellingham has um approved twenty two annexations since our growth boundary was created in the mid nineties. And so that's the area that's crosshatched there. Um, that totals about just over three thousand acres and today is home to about nine thousand residents and eight thousand jobs. Um, and this is just to illustrate, this is an area that Bellingham has um heavily invested in for infrastructure and providing urban services to uh to uh allow that growth to happen in those areas. And if you're familiar with this, with Bellingham, this is the area where you'd find West Baker View, Costco, Fred Meyer, the north end of the Cordada neighborhood, and then the uh King Mountain neighborhood and Iron Gate industrial area. So some of the, some of the areas that if you're familiar with the community, it's where a lot of the growth in Bellingham has been happening over the last fifteen or so years. And then this map shows just in the current city limits, it highlights a few different areas that are related to um code updates Bellingham has made in recent years to add development capacity within the city. Uh, the pink areas are the urban village areas that we've master planned. Uh, and the orange and red are the residential multi and commercial planned areas that we've done recent code updates to, to simplify and streamline code and implement minimum densities. And then the um larger purple dots are areas that have received development projects uh using our infill toolkit regulations, small kind of middle housing style development projects, a lot of townhomes. And then the very small dark blue dots are accessory dwelling units that have been approved under our accessory dwelling unit or A D U ordinance. Um, all of these together um constitute thousands of, thousands of housing units. Um, the urban villages have accommodated about three thousand housing units since those plans have been approved. Um, we've had about a thousand infill toolkit housing units approved, again, mostly townhomes and mostly on uh for sale lots. And then we've had about three hundred accessory dwelling units approved under our um two thousand and eighteen ordinance. And then just since last year when we uh updated our A D U ordinance to be in compliance with state code, we've we've had about ninety, uh, over ninety applications, which is about double our rate that we've had over the last few years. So um, again, intentionally uh updating and streamlining code to add capacity for housing and development within the city. And then addressing the housing crisis, um, Bellingham uh leverages funds from a a couple of different pots of money. We have our voter-approved housing levy uh, which generates about four million dollars a year. Uh, we use some of the affordable housing sales tax that's collected for our area uh, about four million again per year. Uh, and then we add to that real estate excise tax, some general fund monies, and and then leverage federal funds from HUD. Um, last year, those, that total was about fourteen million dollars and uh we had kind of a banner year last year. We were able to complete three hundred and thirty three affordable subsidized housing units, and that's again in partnership with our nonprofit partners in the community that that build and manage those facilities. Um, to date, these programs have accommodated or built um about seventeen hundred affordable units within Bellingham. Um, and uh we've averaged about a hundred and thirty units per year over the last ten years. And I would just highlight that, you know, despite this heavy level of investment, there's never enough. The the need still far exceeds what we're able to achieve. Um, and I would just say it's not just money. We've, we've, um, many of you are familiar with the different partners we work with in the community. Um, finding more um nonprofits to be able to uh build and manage these facilities is super challenging. It's, it's a specific skill set and we just don't have enough groups in the community to meet the need. Um, so that's, um, and then in particular, the um the permanent supportive housing with onsite services is a particularly hard, uh, hard thing to provide. So we're grateful for the partners we have, but we certainly need more. This chart shows uh how Bellingham has been accommodating population This chart shows, uh, how Bellingham has been accommodating population growth since the 2016 plan was updated or was adopted, rather. Um, you can see the blue line is what the, uh, the, um, anticipated growth was about 1,350 people per year. And you can see the line going from our plan update in 2016 to this year. And then the orange line is what the actual. Growth was, and you can see we're just over what we anticipated, about 7% over. And then you could see the dramatic dip here in the middle, which. Is growth did definitely slow down during that two-year period during the COVID quarantine. But what that dip really is, is the on-campus, um, students at Western Washington University moving home from the dormitories and then coming back. A year and a half later. So that's, it's, it's not all, uh, it's not a loss of population necessarily. It's the students moving home and then returning to the community. Um, but you can see we were averaging about 1,400, uh, just over 1,440 people per year. Uh, growth over that period, um, in the comp plan allocated about 1,350. So again, about 7% more than anticipated. For housing, um, this, this chart shows, uh, based on O F M data, uh, housing accommodated in each of the urban growth areas. And you can see Bellingham over that same period, uh, the last eight years accommodated just over half of countywide housing. About, uh, 5,700, uh, homes out of about 11,000, uh, just over 11,000 total built countywide. Um, and then we also accommodate about 62 and a half, uh, percent of countywide employment, or that's about 70,000 out of 112,000 jobs. Um, and just of note, uh, Bellingham does accommodate about 45% of the industrial jobs in Watkins County. Okay, that's some background. Um, now getting to the, uh. Getting to the preliminary growth proposal. You can see on lines, uh, one and two, the technical report that Matt referred to. Um, there's the medium and adjusted high-growth allocation. And then you can see, um, th- this is the, uh, uh, allocated growth to, uh, Bellingham again, based on that, that historic shares method. And then you can see the, uh, on line three there, the city's preliminary proposal. And what we did was we compared those two, uh, the medium and the adjusted high number to what we've actually been achieving in recent years. And that's based on that line chart I just showed you. And based on that, um, that, that, if we just split the difference between that, uh, technical report medium and adjusted high number, then we get that 30,310 total growth. Which, uh, equates to about 1,378 people per year, which is very close to the, the, uh. It's about 95% of the total that we've actually been accommodating. So just under what Bellingham's been growing. So we felt like that was a reasonable. Number to, um, do our capital facility planning work and preliminary policy work on as we go through this comp plan update. And then, um, see what the countywide environmental impacts analysis shows, um, see what the traffic analysis and climate impacts and those other things show. And compare that with our capital facility, uh, estimated costs. And, uh, reevaluate at that point. So, um, that seemed like a very reasonable approach to us, given that it's very close to the, the recent population we've been accommodating. Um, employment growth, you can see there the phase one technical, uh, the, the technical, uh, medium allocation. And again, the adjusted high numbers, 15,000 and then 23,600. And then again, we just split the difference between those two, keeping the ratio of jobs to population the same, um, using the same, uh, ratio that the consultants did for assigning jobs countywide for future growth. And that's what that 19,384 jobs number is. And then this is getting, uh, so the, the last two slides were the, uh, the preliminary proposal for, uh, growth allocation for population and jobs. And then this is the preliminary residential capacity. This is based on our, um, our recent work estimating Bellingham's land capacity. And, uh, you can see the, on line one, the estimated population growth capacity. And then on line two, um, the, uh, the allocated from that previous slide. Uh, and you can see the 25,000, just over 25,000 population capacity. And that's, that's based on existing zoning. That's not the proposed zoning that we would consider in this comprehensive plan update. That's under today's rules. It does include the accessory dwelling unit, um, code updates that Bellingham did in 2023. But it does not include things like Bellingham's response to the state's, uh, middle housing bill. Um, the co-living housing and also changing things like our design review regulations and other, other similar things that will affect housing supply. Um, and the ability to build in our community. So this is our, what we're calling our baseline or starting point. And you can see that we are about, uh, 5,000 people short of meeting that 30,000, um, person, uh, allocation. And then the associated housing allocation that would go with that, um, we're about 4,000 housing units short there. So there are some, uh, additional required and discretionary actions that the city could take to increase our housing, uh, and population capacity to make up that gap. Some of the required actions, like I just, uh, mentioned, include responding to the required state, uh, housing laws that were passed in 2023. Um, the two, uh, two of the more significant ones being that, that middle housing bill, House Bill 1110. And then House Bill 1998 or the co-living housing bill. And then also again, some of the ones that involve streamlining. Our regulations. Some of the discretionary actions that we'll be considering in this update. Include increasing density along high-frequency transit corridors or transit-oriented development. Um, implementing minimum densities across all of our residential zones and then, uh, possibly expanding the urban growth boundary to add land for housing. And all of those would be, um, the impacts and costs associated with all of those options are part of what we'll be evaluating in this plan update. And this looks at the, uh, the employment capacity. You can see that we're very close on this. It's basically a wash. Um, but it is, uh, you know, we're just meeting that capacity. There's no additional based on our, our, uh, preliminary kind of baseline estimate. Um, and so based on that and based on, uh, what we've heard from, uh, so far in our public outreach. There are a variety of things that we'll consider in this update that could increase our employment capacity. Again, um, ad- additional, uh, development capacity along transit, transit corridors is one approach. Um, one thing we are, uh, also strongly considering is allowing more small-scale commercial services in all residential areas. Especially if we're going to be adding a lot of middle housing, we're trying to eliminate vehicle trips for people. And allowing small-scale commercial services in those areas for daycares, for small groceries and similar kinds of things, um, we see as a way to get there. Um, and then also, if we do expand the urban growth area boundary, then that would also, it would not just be for housing. It would include some employment options as well. And, um, again, finally, those, the potential impacts and costs associated with those actions. Um, will be evaluated as we get the results of that E I S and do our own capital facility analysis. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'll, um. I'll hand off to the next city.
Would it be Alex from Blaine?
Yes, thank you, Matt. Bringing up the PowerPoint now. All right. Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. I'm Alex Wingers, me, development services director for the city of Blaine. And before we get going, I just wanted to thank Matt and the Waukam County staff for kind of bringing this all together here and keeping us going. Um. I, I just think this is a really cool opportunity to do some, you know, real planning and, you know, take a little break from, from permit review and working with all the other jurisdictions and kind of coordinating these growth. Updates. It's, it's been, it's been a pleasure working with all the other jurisdictions. So I just wanted to start with that. Okay, so let's get to our preliminary growth proposal. So, um, you can see, uh, the city of Blaine on your screen here. Um, we have, you know, nice working waterfront and downtown and. Um, that's just one of the, one of the things to consider, um, you know, when allocating growth, I think is, you know, Blaine is a great place to live, work and play. So. I don't have, um, quite as many, um, interesting, you know, maps or, uh, as, as Chris did. So, uh, my presentation is going to be a little more simplistic. Um, but let's get to the, uh, growth numbers here. So. Blaine's request is, uh, for 3,500, uh, in population and, um, 1,092 in employment. Uh, we kind of did a similar thing where we. Split the difference between m- medium and high for population. And we had a pretty good discussion about this with our city council. Um, just not that long ago, on October 28th, our, our city council, you know, had a good meeting on this. We, we, we talked about it and, um. Ended up settling on the 3,500, um, agreeing to just these, uh, prelim- preliminary numbers. And then we wanted to go, uh, with the higher, um, employment. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So. So why support our allocation request? Well. Now is the time for Blaine. We, we, we've got a lot going on. We, we're working on our downtown. We've, um, provided some parking relief for new development downtown. Um, we're considering height limits, increasing some of those. There's tremendous capacity for infill. Um, just to think that we, you know, as, as the planner for the city, but I just think it's a very desirable place. That lives, uh, as I'm sure all the other planners representing their cities, uh, share that same view, but. Um, and as a Waukam County planning commissioners, I'm a, and, 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 and residents, um, hopefully you come to Blaine often. And if you don't, I encourage you to come back and kind of see what we've got going on. Uh, you know, there, there, we're, we're seeing, um, kind of a, uh, you know, Blaine's turning over a new leaf and, uh, you know. Please come, come by and check it out. So. Um. The other, the other reason is we've got capacity. Um, our current U G A has, uh, enough capacity for over, you know, 10,500 additional people. So our, our request of 3,500 for 20 years of, of growth is easily accommodated. Now, we have in fact a surplus of, of over 7,000, um, uh, uh, of people, you know, land to accommodate 7,000 people. So. Um, it may be, maybe another way to look at this is we've got. Capacity for, for decades more. So, um, Blaine, we can really, you can send a lot more growth to us if, if you wanted. Um, and then for, um. Our employment lands, um, very, very similar. So again, our, our current U G A could accommodate over 5,000 jobs. Um, you know, with our request of just over 1,000. Um, there's still surplus of, of almost 4,000 jobs. And, and I, and I would point out that, um, how we calculated those numbers, you know, of course, we, we made, made some assumptions on, on how much square footage, you know, uh. Uh, of land, uh, a, a job would, would take. Um, I do want to thank Bellingham for kind of working on that and the, and the technical memo and kind of calculating the, the numbers. But I would also point out that Blaine has a lot of, um, just warehousing and, and, you know, um, cold storage and things like that. And, and those type of facilities don't have a lot of jobs and they take up a, a pretty big footprint. So. We really need to plan for having a lot of land available. Um, we, we want to be ready. Um, if we do get a big employer coming to town, like another Nature's Path or Eighth Avenue Foods, Totally Chocolate, something like that. We, we want to be ready to welcome them. We want those lands or. Uh, to be available. We've been trying to develop, you know, um. Buildable sites. Um, so. We, we, we're, we're a small community, uh, and it doesn't take too much to, to, you know, impact that land supply. Um, this is our s- city limits and U G A shown kind of in, shown there in yellow. Um, we, we don't have, have a big U G A right now and, um, all, we have plenty of capacity, um, inside the city as, as I was talking about. Uh, another reason, we, we have, um, the infrastructure in place. So this is our Lighthouse Point Water Reclamation Facility. This turns our sewage into clean water. I just, that's really cool. Um, so, you know, we, we, this was built to accommodate, um, our, our, our previous. Urban growth area, which was a lot larger. Uh, and we also have, uh, you know, a very strong, uh, aquifer and, and water rights. That we're. Continuing to work on and, um, make, make sure those are protected in, into the future. Uh, when we're, you know. And, and I'd also maybe take a moment to point out that there, there is a little bit of urgency. Uh, with this request, you know, the, especially, especially for the city of Blaine, we're, we're working on updating all of our utility plans. Um, and, and we would like to have these, uh, growth numbers to, to put into our, um, utility plans, you know, we're, we, we will be, um. You know, working on those moving forward. A lot of our funding needs to be expended by June of 2025. So the sooner we can get these growth allocation numbers, the better it is for the city of Blaine. Uh, so I just wanted to mention that. In addition, uh, we are doing some economic development efforts. And so, uh, this is a 50-acre general binding site plan. Uh, may, maybe that's not that big to Waukam County or, or like the city of Bellingham, for example, but this is kind of a big deal to, uh, the city of Blaine. This. This, this is a, a pretty big, pretty big, you know, stone in our, in our small bucket. This fills up a lot of our capacity. So we, we have. Actively partnered with the ownership group here. Um, the city has, you know, letter of intent to sell some of this land. The city owns about five acres and the developer owns, uh, the other 45 acres. Uh, but we, you know, co-signed a, um, Army Corps of Engineer permit and we're actively working on this project. So if this project moves forward, this will take up a big piece of our supply. So we do want to have that high population, uh. Allocation or in, in, in high employment allocation. So we can, um. Be ready for the next development that comes along. So. Really with that, I just wanted to, um. Take any questions? If there's time for questions now, I'd be happy to take those, um, or, or I don't know if we're, are we waiting to the end? Are, are there going to be questions for us? I'm not sure. But that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Alex. So, uh, Everson, I don't know, um, Alex or Roland?
Yeah, it will be me presenting today. Um, let me share my screen real quick. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Alex Putnam. I'm the city planner for Everson. Oh, my goodness. And sorry about that. Um, I'm the city planner for Everson. I'll be presenting the U G A proposal for, uh, Everson. So. Here is the map of Everson. Um, you can see that the city is split by the Nuksek River. And Everson is definitely growing towards the southwest side of town. Um, this is an area that's. Outside of the floodplain. Um, and surrounding the city is mostly agriculture, mineral resource land and a small bit of rural zoning. And State Route 544 runs through the city, um, on this map in the orange. dotted areas that is our current U G A. And the hatched orange area is our current U G A reserve. Um, and yeah. So here you can see the historical population growth in Everson, um, according to the. Uh, U S Census from 2000 to 2020, Everson increased by 838 people. And since then, it's estimated that that population has actually grown to 3,135 people as of April 2023. Um, this graph shows the overall total population of Everson throughout a 23-year period. Um, you can see it's a pretty steady increase, uh, over that time. And this graph shows the population growth. So the amount of new people within the city coming into the city each year. Uh, within that same time period. Um, as you can see, especially in the last eight or so years, it has significantly grown and Everson is, uh, certainly seeing a. Increase in growth, uh, especially since I've been here. So for our proposal, we are proposing a population growth allocation of 1,408 people over the 22-year planning period. Um, this is the same growth allocation as shown in the technical high report. Um, and we came up with this proposal on a staff level and also with the support of our city council. And here is just some historical, uh. Growth and comparing it to our current proposal, um, between 2013 and 2023. Um. We had an average annual growth rate of 48 people per year, which equates to a growth rate of about 1.7%. And this contributed to about 1.3% of the county's growth. Um, our proposal is proposing an annual growth of 64 people per year. Um, this growth rate will remain 1.7%, so the same as it has been for the past. This growth rate will remain one point seven percent, so the same as it has been for the past ten years. And it will contribute to two point one percent of the county's entire growth. And I thought I would talk about the growth since the twenty sixteen comprehensive update. In that update, we allocated one thousand two hundred and forty two people across that twenty three year period. However, since then, in seven years, we have increased in five hundred and thirty five people. This actually results in a growth rate of two point seven percent and seventy six people per year. So according to these numbers, during the twenty sixteen compa- comp plan update, we should have only increased by about three hundred and seventy eight people, but it said it was five hundred and thirty five. So that's about a difference of a hundred and fifty seven people. So Everson is certainly growing, especially right now. There's pretty crazy development. I've only been there for a year, so Roland may be able to speak more about the the difference in the history. But it's it's definitely been pretty insane. And then our employment growth proposal, we are proposing an employment growth of six hundred and two jobs over this planning period. This is above the technical report high, but it's important to note that this is the same proposed growth number that was in the twenty sixteen County Comprehensive Plan. And the city just believes that it's important to bring more employment allocation to these smaller communities as, you know, we're trying to create more jobs for community members, have more employment and businesses within the city rather than, you know, people having to go to their jobs in Bellingham or even further. So that's why our growth proposal is higher than the technical report high. And as for our land capacity analysis, like I mentioned, Everson's been pretty busy, so we're still working on it. But based on all of our preliminary analysis, we have, we're anticipating a deficit in population growth capacity. Every scenario that we've done, that's been the result. And for employment growth capacity, we are anticipating a modest surplus. But however, these aren't the exact results that we have right now. So we're still figuring that out. But yeah, my presentation isn't as crazy as Bellingham and Blaine. But thank you for listening. And yeah, that'll be it.
Thanks, Alex. So we are at Ferndale. Michael.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Mike's your boat. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Ferndale. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully it will work. Right. Yes, it's working. So City of Ferndale, these are our population employment projections. So some trends, City of Ferndale, we are centrally located within the county, right on the I five. We have four interchanges and we have probably one of the last underdeveloped or underutilized interchanges at Grandview, which has a very strong potential to provide additional employment opportunities range from light industrial through commercial. The Pork is super interested in that. We've been working with them to look at how to extend sewer up to the interchange, which I think is the primary limiting factor up there. We have a strong employment base and a vibrant downtown. We were the fastest growing city in the county from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty three. And our population has has grown pretty steadily since the GMA was instituted in nineteen ninety, a little over tripled. We also have been pretty good at keeping up on our infrastructure, making sure we have treatment facilities in place. Within the last several years, we have updated our water and wastewater treatment facilities. We're in the process of planning for our capital facilities. And so I think we're we're ready. City of Ferndale growth allocations for population, we went with the technical report high. The ten thousand nine hundred and sixty one, planning commission reviewed it, made a recommendation to council, and council went with that. Part of the reason for doing that was we have recently, as a region, completed the buildable land inventory. And we went back and we measured and we saw what we did. Most of our jurisdictions hit our targets, yet we still have issues within our region in terms of housing. We think it's prudent to plan for additional housing. We have run some preliminary analysis using the land capacity analysis model. We believe that we can accommodate all of the residential land within the existing UGA. Our existing unincorporated UGA in terms of residential is all low density residential. So it's a pretty good opportunity in there to create more urban village type developments. Look at higher density, placing that density in areas where it's appropriate. We're also looking at increasing the minimum density for single family detached. We have three different single family detached zones. And, you know, our high density has a good minimum density in it. And it's probably appropriate for areas that are containing a lot of critical areas. Smaller lots are easier to fit in those areas and protect the resource. Having the open space also helps, you know, attenuate the smaller lot size. So that's for population. We again are proposing the ten thousand nine hundred and sixty one. We believe we can accommodate that growth and we think it is prudent to plan for it. For employment, we also went with the technical high. So that would be an additional three thousand three hundred and thirty seven jobs within Ferndale. As I stated earlier, we have a lot of potential up at the Grandview area. And what we did when we were running the preliminary analysis through the land capacity model is we did look to rezone a fair amount of low density residential when it was appropriate in the correct places. But we do show a deficit to accommodate employment. And so we would be looking to rezone some residential land to industrial and commercial, as I stated. Definitely be rezoning commercial land to mixed use commercial. And we'll be looking at taking additional UGA from the existing UGA reserve. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike. So I think Linden, Dave, you're up?
Yeah, no. I can share my screen here. Wait, are you seeing that? Yeah, so my name's Dave Timmer. I'm a city planner here with the City of Linden and going through my presentation for our preliminary growth proposals. Just a table showing Linden's past population growth since the GMA was implemented. And as the familiar theme across the county, where we are also growing and fairly significantly over the last ten years or so. Since nineteen ninety, Linden's population has tripled, similar to Ferndale's. In twenty twenty three, we're approaching seventeen thousand people. Since two, more recently, since twenty ten, we're seeing, we've seen around three hundred new residents come to the city every year and averaged about two point five percent annual growth during that time. And in twenty twenty three, Linden holds seven percent of the county's population, but has taken twelve percent of the last ten years of countywide growth. So as we look ahead, we were, the city has contemplated both the high approach and has has landed on the middle projection, the often technical report middle. And some of the reason behind that is, I think we, the city is really kind of seeing some of that, the effects of that past growth pressure. As we look to some of the deficits we see in transportation and schools in our community. So I think there's some hesitancy about continuing that growth rate in the city. The other reason is really the city's remaining UGA land that is vacant is fairly difficult to develop. So the the UGA land that is up for development has generally has high water table, critical areas and significant infrastructure needs. And we are seeing that currently as there just really are not a lot of vacant lots available for, particularly for residential growth right now. And where where we expect to see some of that over the next twenty years is in the Pepin Creek Subregion, which is has a lot of capacity for land. But it's just, it's it's not as easy as I guess some of the some of the land that we've been, the city has been developing over the last, you know, ten years. Another thing to take note is our, we recently did a, had an annexation in southwest Linden. Fairly large, two hundred and forty acres, I believe. About a hundred, a hundred and eighty of that is slated for industrial. And this is, this is west of the the Guide Meridian. And at at that point, we're actually really, we're at the edge of our our UGA boundaries. So the city on the western side is really essentially filled up. It's it's UGA. So here's our future, our allocation that we're proposing. As I mentioned, we're we're sticking with that that medium growth allocation for both for both population and employment. We believe we do have the capacity in the UGA for both. As we look into the kind of preliminary runs of the land capacity analysis. So yeah, just a a map of the city, the UGA here. As you see, the kind of brown and gray areas are in the northwest portion of the city. That's where we expect a lot of residential growth to occur. That's the Pepin Creek Subregion. And like I mentioned earlier, a lot of vacant land, but somewhat difficult to develop with high water tables and significant infrastructure needs. And then we also see this area to the the west of the guide. And that's where a lot of our industrial capacity is and and have that that land is available. And our next steps are really to continue work on the land capacity analysis, tighten that up, continuing to look at the housing capacity with the economic categories we expect. We will have a deficit in the lower income categories, not not major, but some that we'll have to look at as far as land use changes to accommodate those lower income categories. And then, of course, capital facilities planning, continue, continue that planning work. And that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Dave. So Nook Sak, Holly? You're you're muted still.
How's that?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Can you see it okay?
Nothing come up yet.
Not yet. One moment. I'm going to switch screens. I've got two screens. Sorry.
There it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Holly Hamilton. I recently joined the City of Nook Sak as Planner Consultant, supporting their comp plan update. So Nook Sak is a small community of sixteen hundred residents. It sits just west of the foothills of the Cascade Mountain Range, north of the intersection of Highway nine and five forty four. Can everybody see that map okay?
I think it's showing up well. If you can bring that screen, that slide back up.
Has that?
That's working pretty good.
Okay. All right. The Nook Sak River is run southwest of the town and it's, you can see the overflow corridor. This is a FEMA map background on the Nook Sak's, Nook Sak's western boundary. The Sumas River follows Nook Sak's eastern boundary. It's fed by Breckenridge and Swift Creek. There's two UGA areas that we have on the southern border, and then we have a UGA reserve.
Can I interrupt for just a minute? Can you, it was, it was bigger than it was. Can you hit your maximize button?
Sure.
See if that'll, if that'll make it bigger.
I think I've got the, let me correct my screens. One moment. There. Is that better?
There we are. That's looking pretty good there.
Okay, great. So based on OFM data, here's the Nook Sak's population growth. It's been on an upward trend since the early eighties with a significant increase you can see beginning in twenty twenty three. Our year by year analysis can be best summarized with this table. You can see the population growth from twenty ten to twenty twenty was five point nine percent. So that's over ten years. And then with current developments that are in progress, population growth from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four has been fairly significant, eighteen point eight percent, and that's a period of just four years. Forecast for twenty eighteen, twenty twenty eight, the next four years is expected to be seventeen point eight percent. We're totaling to about nineteen eighty four, one thousand nine hundred and eighty four residents. And this is based on actual units in construction or approved for development. So it's it's happening while we're watching. This is the technical report that you've been seeing from everybody. The county technical report medium recommended was three hundred and fifty two residents. Because of the plan, the developments that are in construction are approved, we're recommending nine hundred and ninety four, five people, folks who will be taking up residence in Nook Sak. So the county's median growth being three fifty two. The full twenty two year, twenty two year medium allocation is planned to be built out by twenty twenty eight. So we're going to have reached our capacity within that four year period. Slide six. So in terms of county share, Nook Sak's your smallest community. The proposed median growth share is point six percent or sixteen new residents for our community. Nook Sak is anticipating a one point five percent growth share for twenty three, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty, twenty forty five. So the land capacity analysis is ongoing. The city is anticipating that the results are going to show a small deficit of population growth capacity. This result would support a small expansion of the residential UGA outside of the floodplain. And I'd note that the city is also in discussion and reevaluating residential densities, cottage clusters that are appropriate for this community. Slide eight. For employment growth, proposed allocations reflect expected residential growth. We recognize that the light industrial and commercial development is lagging the residential growth currently for Nook Sak, but we're proposing a planned increase in numbers, employment numbers proportionate to its population increase. Okay, so again, with the completion of the land capacity analysis, we're anticipating that the results are going to show a moderate deficit of employment growth capacity. This could result in support for converting some of the existing UGA reserve to UGA lands. We've, I've indicated here, you know, by increasing available lands for light industrial and commercial, it would support commerce. by increasing available lands for light industrial and commercial, it would support commerce and industry growth. Right now it's fairly slow and disproportionate, I would say, to the growth that's taking place. There's definitely a need for amenities and services in the area. By increasing industrial and commercial lands, we would certainly see a decline in traffic volume heading south. And then of course, we're, Nook Sak is eager to grow their commercial sector. So final notes, the community growth is currently exceeding historic patterns. We're seeing a very high increase in trucking freight volumes down Highway nine, coming down from the border. And then the industrial, commercial sectors lagging residential growth. We're expecting that to shift to accommodate the demands. And that's everything I have. Sorry for the slide challenges.
Thanks, Holly. I like all your pictures in there.
Thanks.
Okay, Carson.
Yes, I am here in person.
Okay. Do you need me to run your slides?
I guess so, yes.
Okay. So let's see, Holly, could you?
Unshare?
Yeah, unshare. Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very good.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. So my name is Carson Cortez. I am the city planner for the city of Sumas. And I'm here to be talking about Sumas's population and employment projections and proposal for the coming comp plan update period. Matt, can you?
Let's see here. Hold on, I gotta find that. Too many things go on my screen here. I'm not seeing the advanced button. It's my problem here. I might have to share it just on the other one. I'm not. For some reason, I don't have your advanced button on yours, so. Not sure what's going on. I might have to do this. Can you see that?
No, it's working pretty good now.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, so it's a little small now, but this is a map of Sumas's urban growth area. It's a pretty small community. You can see.
Let me see if I can make that a little bit bigger. No, that didn't work.
Matt, I can share it.
You can share it. Okay, that would be wonderful. I think I got too much stuff going on my screen here, so. Oops.
There.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Next slide. Okay. There we go. So this is a map of the city of Sumas. It's a pretty small community. You can see a lot of blue in the area, especially within the city. That's all floodplain, 100-year floodplain as designated by FEMA. City of Sumas floods pretty often, three times in the past, since 2020. You can see the letters AG floating around. That represents the fact that Sumas is entirely surrounded by agriculture zoning. You can see on the south side of Sumas, you can see purple diagonal lines. The border lines on the left are the city's unincorporated UGA, the land that we have left to annex. And then the other purple lines going the other direction are city's UGA reserve. So the city's unincorporated urban growth area is one parcel. It's owned by a dairy farmer who uses the land to grow feed for his cows. And so he doesn't want it to be developed. He doesn't want to sell it, which is perfectly reasonable, but that puts Sumas in a very awkward position. Let's continue. So this is a look at Sumas's population growth since the GMA was adopted in 1990. If you look from 1990 to 2020, Sumas's population has doubled between 744 and 665. And even since then, we've grown by another almost 200 population in our current OFM population this year of 1,835. So it's been a pretty steady increase. You can see this graph is pretty linear. There's some flattening out, but generally it tends to go in the same direction. So we're going to hold to continue that growth in the same general direction moving forward. So with that, I want to get into looking at Sumas's UGA population growth proposal from the last comprehensive plan update. The technical report medium that was done back then had the population growth in the 20 years at 644. But the preliminary proposal was at 874, so it was, it was higher for sure. And then next slide. This is our current proposal, UGA population growth proposal. So the technical report has us at 697. But our proposal is for 1,000 new people over 20 years. That's a difference of 303. And that's just slightly lower than the technical report high allocation of 1,052. So it's not at the high, it's within the margin, but it then leaned towards the high. And we think that this is, it's, it's, it's a good increase because we're trying to go with the county's push to concentrate population in the city centers and out of the county. So we can preserve as much agriculture as possible. Slide. So, but the issue is the city doesn't have any of the capacity for new residential development currently. And this is land capacity analysis work that is still preliminary, but this is our current numbers as they stand. Currently, the city only has enough land, residential land for 269 new residents. Compared to our 1,000 population, that's a deficit of 731 people that we don't have the room for. So that's a big problem and something that since I started working in Sumas a year and a half ago has been one of my primary concerns is that how do we fix the fact that we don't have any room for more people? So there's a few ways to look at it. You can upzone, which residents aren't overly excited about. There's infill development, filling in the spaces that you have open within city limits. Sumas hasn't annexed any land since 2009. So all the development that's happened since then has been infill development. And we are currently running out of infill room as well. So the really only other option available to the city is to look at expansion of our urban growth areas. So that is going to be a main topic of concern for the city. So this is a look at the historic versus projected annual growth rate. So in the 10 years between 2013 and 2023, Sumas grew by a population of 365 people. That's 36 and a half people per year in an annual growth rate of 2.3%. Our current proposal is for 1,000 people over 22 years. So that's 45 and a half people per year or an annual growth rate of 2.1%. So even though it's a higher number, it's actually a smaller rate of growth over time. So it's not actually that crazy of a difference. So now I want to go quickly into Sumas's employment growth proposal. It's pretty similar in terms of it's, that it's higher. This is the last comprehensive plan, urban growth, employment growth proposal. 221 technical report medium versus the city proposals of 445. And so next slide. This is the proposal for this year. The technical report medium has us at 150 compared to 221 last time around. It's a little bit less, which I have some words about, but it's myself. But the city's proposal is at 500, which is pretty similar to the 445 that we had last time around. So we're keeping the proposal pretty similar, a little bit higher, but pretty similar to what we had last time. But the issue is, again, Sumas doesn't have enough land capacity for deployment either. We're down, we have a deficit of 281 jobs that we can't accommodate right now with our current land area. So to make that up, one of the things that we are proposing is part of our proposal to expand the urban growth area is also to expand Sumas's industrial district, which is about half of the city at the moment and provides our major source of jobs. And we would like to continue that going forward. So that's my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Carson and Eileen. Stepping in and running that. Appreciate that. All right. Oops. So I'm gonna do the county urban growth areas that are not associated with the city and the rural areas. So you can all see that on your screens?
Yep.
Great. So again, my name is Matt Almet, Watkin County Planning. So I'm going to be presenting the county growth proposals for the Birch Bay Urban Growth Area, Cherry Point Urban Growth Area, Columbia Valley Urban Growth Area, and the Rural and Resource Lands. Okay, so we're going to start out with Birch Bay. So Watkin County designated Birch Bay as an urban growth area in 1997. And the Birch Point area, up, up in this area, and the area south of Point Whitehorn down here were removed from the UGA when the Birch Bay Community Plan was adopted in 2004. The Birch Bay UGA was reduced further in the 2009 review when lands in the eastern part of the UGA were removed. I think it was up here and then this was put in reserve. So this is the current configuration of the UGA. And the UGA contains a variety of residential, resort, recreational, and commercial land uses. And you know, these land uses include year-round homes, vacation rentals, RV parks, mobile home parks, condos, restaurants, shops that cater to seasonal population, a state park. One of the other things that we have up at Birch Bay is a flood. Part of the central part is in the flood zone here. And we also have some sea level rise modeling for various, you know, scenarios. And, and that pretty closely follows the flood area and kind of right along the coastline a little bit too, in Birch Bay Village. So the Birch Bay UGA has more than doubled in population over the last two decades. So Birch Bay is approximately 3,600 acres and has an estimated 2023 population of 8,908 people. So the technical report middle population growth scenario, which is based upon, again, the percentage share of countywide growth the UGA received from 2013 to 2023, would equate to an additional 105 people per year in the Birch Bay UGA over the 22-year planning period. So the tech report middle scenario for Birch Bay is lower than the growth experienced over the last three decades. So this preliminary population projection extrapolates the annual average growth in the UGA between 2013 and 2023 to the new planning period, 23 through 45. So this would be a population growth of 2,662 or 121 people per year through 2045. And so the, the UGA grew by 121 over the last 10 years. So looking to continue that trend. The preliminary land capacity analysis indicates the existing urban growth area can accommodate the proposed population projections with the potential change to zoning that would allow, you know, middle housing like duplex, triplex, fourplex development in the urban residential zone. And that would be to satisfy the requirements of House Bill 1220. So we're going to need to allow some of that middle housing in areas that are currently zoned for single-family homes. Although, so moving on to employment, although the Birch Bay UGA has 3.8% of the countywide population, it had only about 0.5% or one-half of 1% of the countywide jobs. So the county comp plan and the Birch Bay Community Plan support job growth in the UGA. So in order to support those opportunities for businesses to locate in the UGA and potential employment opportunities, the initial proposal is for an employment projection of 450 jobs over the new planning period from 2023 to 2045. All right. And the preliminary land capacity analysis indicates the existing Birch Bay UGA could accommodate that initial employment projection without any changes to the UGA or zoning code. All right. Cherry Point. So the Cherry Point UGA is located in the western portion of Watkin County, west of Ferndale, south of Birch Bay, and north of the Lummy Reservation. And the marine shoreline is to the west. And so Cherry Point has been developed with heavy industrial uses, including two oil refineries and an aluminum smelter, which shut down in 2020 for Intelco. Cherry Point was designated for industrial use on the 1970 comp plan map and the 1981 Cherry Point Ferndale Subarea Plan. And that, this map is from the Subarea Plan from 81 with some colors added. So the GMA was enacted by the state legislature in 1990. And Watkin County designated Cherry Point as a UGA under GMA in 97. So the Cherry Point UGA is approximately 11 square miles. It's a major slash port industrial area with zoning that generally does not allow residential development. And this is the current configuration of the UGA. We would note, and some of you commissioners will remember, county council adopted an ordinance in 2021, amending the comp plan and zoning to give kind of greater consideration to environmental factors in Cherry Point, particularly with regard to fossil fuel facilities. And there's also archaeological resources in the area. So in order to support opportunities for industry to locate in the area and potential job growth, including from redevelopment of the Intelco site, which currently we have a permit in for demolition. The initial proposal is for an employment allocation of 1,200 for the Cherry Point UGA over the next 22 years, and that's above the tech report high scenario. So the preliminary land capacity analysis indicates the existing UGA can accommodate the proposed employment growth. There is some land in the UGA currently zoned, light impact industrial, north of Grandview, that's used as like wetland mitigation sites that we may look at taking out of the UGA, at least, you know, in one of the EIS alternatives. Additionally, there's a relatively small light impact industrial zone at the southeast corner of the UGA that could be considered for addition. All right, Columbia Valley. So the Columbia Valley is located between Sumas Mountain and Red Mountain, southeast of Sumas. Columbia Valley area was originally developed with several relatively large subdivisions to cater to a seasonal population. However, because real estate prices were affordable, the area became more attractive for full-time residents and has transitioned to a higher percentage of that year-round housing. So the estimated 2023 population of the UGA is 3,577. So Watkin County designated the Columbia Valley as an urban growth area in 1999. And at that time, the UGA included land from Kendall Road, basically north of Limestone Road down to the Kendall Elementary School to the south. So the UGA was reduced in size from approximately 1489 acres to 1,156 acres in the 2009 UGA review. So this is the current configuration. So UGA population has, growth has slowed over the last several decades. However, the UGA population grew by almost 1,000 people from 2020, excuse me, 2000 to 2020. So the tech report middle population growth scenario would equate to about 45 additional people per year over the 22-year planning period. This is higher than 2010 to 20, but lower than the decades before that. So similar to Birch Bay, the initial proposal for Columbia Valley extrapolates the annual average population growth in the UGA between 2013 and 2023 to the new planning period. So the proposed growth allocation of 1,137 would equate to about 52 people per year through 2045, kind of the same we've had over the last 10 years. The preliminary land capacity analysis indicates the existing Columbia Valley UGA can accommodate. The preliminary land capacity analysis indicates the existing Columbia Valley UGA can accommodate the proposed population growth with potential rezoning of some land in the UGA from urban residential four units per acre to urban residential medium density, six units per acre. And that would allow that multifamily housing to satisfy the requirements of House Bill twelve-twenty. So right now, it's pretty much zoned for a single family. Okay, for employment, although the Columbia Valley had one point five percent of the countywide population, it had only a point one percent or one-tenth of one percent of the countywide jobs. So the County Comp Plan and the Foothill Subarea Plan support job growth in the UGA. In order to support opportunities for businesses to locate there and for potential job growth, the initial proposal is for employment allocation of three hundred and fifty jobs over the new planning period from twenty twenty-three to twenty forty-five. And I'd just like to comment on this tech report middle. Again, that there's very few jobs up at Columbia Valley right now. And so the tech report takes that percentage of job growth, the share of job growth over the last ten years, and uses that to project into the future. Well, if there's very little job growth in the past, it's going to project very little for the future. And that's what's happening here with the tech report middle. All right, so the preliminary land capacity analysis indicates the Columbia Valley UGA can accommodate the employment growth with a potential rezone of almost forty acres to light impact industrial. And the concept of a planned light impact industrial area north of Limestone Road up here is already in the Foothill Subarea Plan, although the area has not been rezoned to light impact industrial. Also, in the two thousand and nine UGA review, in the two thousand and eleven Foothill Subarea Plan, a planned town center, which is here with general commercial zoning, was established in a central location in the UGA. And the regional, East Watkin Regional Resource Center was here. There aren't any commercial uses here yet, though. All right, so we're gonna move on to rural and resource lands. So the county has designated rural and resource lands on the Comp Plan map as required by the GMA. So the rural lands, generally shown in brown, and they're similar, kind of this pinkish color and red, include R five A, one dwelling per five acres, R ten A, one dwelling per ten acres. But they also include these limited areas of more intensive rural development or lammards. So we can see up here at Custer, that's a lammard. We can see Demming, you know, Acme, Southern Valley, around Lake Samish. High Notes Corner, you know, Poland Guide, et cetera. So those are areas that had some level of existing development as of nineteen ninety, when the GMA was adopted. And GMA amendments came into effect, I think it was in ninety-seven, that allowed counties to designate these limited areas of more intensive rural development, where you can't expand them. They're not like a UGA. You can't go out. They have a logical outer boundary that's kind of set, but you can kind of infill within those areas more intensely than you can, you know, in other areas, other rural areas. Okay, and then we've got the resource lands, and we've got agriculture, which is kind of this light green and kind of the north central, some down by the by the reservation area, and there's some in South Fork Valley, so forth. We have forestry land, commercial forestry is in this dark green, then you have some light green, which is rural forestry. And then you've got mineral resource lands, which is this gray. And you can see that some of that area is adjacent to like Everson and Nookzak, also up by Blaine and so forth. So population growth in the rural areas has slowed over the last several decades since the passage of GMA in nineteen ninety, as shown on this slide. And the preliminary proposal is to allocate population growth of nine thousand new residents in the rural and resource lands over the planning period. So this number has been reduced from the ten thousand figure originally suggested by Planning and Development Services. So we had a couple work sessions with County Council. And this nine thousand figure was based on a consideration of a motion made by the County Council's Committee of the Whole on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, to reduce the ten thousand growth figure. And that's below the tech report medium. So the nine thousand population growth projection for rural and resource lands would equate to a growth of about four hundred and nine people per year in these areas over the twenty-two-year planning period. And this would continue the trend of lower growth experienced outside UGAs over the last three decades. So Comprehensive Plan Policy two DD one on the screen there says the county must take action if rural population growth is significantly higher than the projections. So actions may include basically just changing the projected population or changing the development regulations to limit growth outside of urban growth areas. In addition, this policy says the county should coordinate with the cities to ensure they have policies in place to encourage growth, that type of thing. But, you know, if there's more growth in rural areas than projected in the Comp Plan, the county has to take action, which could include rezoning for less development in these areas. We would note that in the draft EIS, there will be a mitigating measure that will look at rezoning, what we call rural study areas, which are basically rural five-acre and rural ten-acre areas that have valuable ag soils. And there'll be a potential mitigating measure that those areas could be rezoned to allow less density. And that hasn't been fully fleshed out, but it could be, you know, one dwelling per twenty acre or, you know, it could be different things that could be looked at there. Okay, jobs in rural and resource lands are associated with, you know, agriculture, forestry, mining, home-based businesses, cottage industries, commercial or industrial in these lammards, public schools, and probably a variety of other things. The rural and resource lands had about thirty percent of the countywide population in twenty twenty-three and fourteen percent of the countywide jobs. So the County Comp Plan supports job growth in rural areas and resource lands, and we think the middle projection is reasonable for these areas. Okay, so those are the county's initial or preliminary proposals for Birch Bay, Cherry Point, Columbia Valley, and the rural and resource lands of the county. So the public hearing tonight is on all of the growth proposals that the cities and the county presented. And after the hearing, we would be available for questions and the cities would too, or if you want to ask any of those now, that'd be fine. And again, as we mentioned, you know, this is just a lot of stuff, a lot of material, a lot of proposals. So, you know, if the commission thinks it's appropriate, we would welcome, you know, continuing this session to December. So if you have any questions now, we, we or the cities would try to address those.
Commissioner Hanson.
Would you like us to hold Commissioner questions until the work session?
That'd be fine, fine with us. I guess I would ask any of the cities. Are you gonna be here for the work session? If anybody's not gonna be here after the hearing, that would be good to know. It's like
What is the, sorry, Matt, what is the work session?
So it's after, so we'll have a public hearing, so people can speak. And I just want to make sure if anybody needed to step off, that if anybody, you know, any commissioners had any questions, we got to those before you stepped off. So if you're gonna be here all night, we could proceed with the hearing.
Ferndale will hang out with you, Matt.
Okay, great. All right.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing any Commissioner hands coming up or any other hands coming up. So Matt, I think we should start the public hearing.
Sounds good.
So I'm gonna call the, start the public hearing. And Eileen, would you take over from there, please?
Yes. I remind you that this meeting is being broadcast live. The audio is being recorded and will be posted to the county website. If you would like to provide public comment on this topic, we will take comments from those in the room first. Please come up to the podium and print your first and last name on the sign-up sheet. And if you are participating remotely and would like to speak, raise your hand, virtually raise your hand. We'll get to you shortly. Anyone in the room who should speak at this time for this topic? Seeing no one in the room wishes to speak, I'm going to go to your virtual hands. We have Rick Eggers and then Darcy Jones. Rick Eggers, you are, I will put a timer on for three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry for the misfire earlier tonight. I am still Rick Eggers of the Watkin Environmental Council and still one of the co-authors of the letter that WEC sent to you all two days ago on November twelfth. Members of the commission and staff, thank you for this opportunity to comment and your time and effort dedicated to preparing the Comp Plan update. I know Comp stands for comprehensive, but it could just as well stand for complicated, as the process of preparing Comp Plans and updates is nothing if not complex. We know you know that, but we want you to recognize how much we appreciate what you're doing and how difficult it is. And we're not here to make things more difficult. Quite the contrary, we hope to provide our collective experience and expertise for your benefit. That is exactly why we prepared on November twelfth a letter. I will not repeat or summarize the letter, though I urge you to read it if you haven't already. The remainder of my comments will focus on the conclusions we hope you draw from our letter. If you take away only one thing from our letter, and we hope you take away more than one, let that one thing be the procedural mandates in SEPA and the GMA. They must be followed and must be followed early on, not after growth estimates are chosen, but before, so that the planning goals detailed in RCW thirty-six point seventy A point zero two zero can be used to guide the process as that statute requires. To put it colloquially, don't put the growth estimates cart before the environmental slash climate and planning goals horses. And when you do eventually get to the right time for growth estimates, recognize that the OFM has a pretty good record of estimation over many years and that Action Alternative in the current staff report is the one that reflects the more accurate OFM middle range. Finally, understand that it is not necessarily a safe strategy to take the higher estimate. Overestimating has significant manifold consequences, like committing more money in space than is needed to growth or for growth that doesn't materialize. This can create sprawl, the loss of natural resources, and transportation impacts that worsen climate change. So please, follow the statutes now and let that statutorily informed analysis then inform the choice of growth estimates. Thank you. I'm happy to address any questions you may have for me.
Darcy Jones. You wish to speak at this time, Darcy Jones?
Hi, this is Darcy Jones with Jones Engineers, four one six four Meridian Street, Suite three oh four. The population projections and subsequent allocations presented tonight, well, technically considered non-binding. I understand these will evolve into a multi-jurisdictional resolution. And that, that resolution really does represent the goals upon which future planning is gonna be based. Table one of your packet tonight presents the Leland's low mill and highs, you know, and they've explained in a previous commission meeting that those trends are based on the last ten years. But it was further explained that while those, those projections are based on trends, that they're also subject to change based on changing policies. And one, one specific trend that was highlighted in the Leland Report and in their presentations was there has been significantly more people moving into the rural lands than what the policies have intended over the last ten years. And according to Leland, I think it was nineteen percent of all population growth has, has gone into the rural areas outside the UGAs. And to that issue, our, our policies have really failed to limit sprawl. You know, in the packet, you see the proposals from the city and counties. These really represent, you know, policies. And we agree that as a policy, the, the, the total population for the county should be, you know, at least the amount of the total presented in table one. However, we're concerned that some of the allocations need to be carefully thought through. I've appreciated what I've heard from some of the city planners, and it's helped me understand some of the basis. But, you know, going back to the buildable lands report, we can look at what the capacities were reported at that time, and then we look at some of the communities request, you know, that puts them, some of the communities at eighty percent at their capacity or, you know, even, even more. I understand rezones could be part of the solution that's speculative at this point. You know, it's not really clear how we're going to accommodate these units, you know, and each of these numbers. As we allocate numbers, we really have to remember that these numbers represent families. And if we misallocate the numbers, these are families that cannot find a home. And, and that's the importance of the, the numbers here tonight. Thank you.
Ellie Heron.
Thank you. As, as a member of the Agricultural Advisory Committee, my concern is that the county follows through on preserving a hundred thousand acres of agricultural land and that we, that you take a look at the recommendations from the Agricultural Committee and the Rural Land Study and really make concerted effort that we put a hundred thousand acres aside for farmland. I'd be, especially after what I just, after you have said that there's been so much growth in the urban areas and the rural areas, I mean. Thank you.
Bridget, Rick?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to come in and thank you to the planning staff for putting together those presentations. My name is Bridget Break. I'm an attorney in Bellingham. And I've attended several of these meetings now over the course of the past year or so. And I've really appreciated the chance to learn more about the many conflicting considerations that go into long-term planning. That said, I do have some concerns about the proposed growth allocations, specifically the direction of significant population increases to smaller cities and to rural and resource lands. To me, this approach seems both impractical and undesirable, given the county's long-term goals of limiting sprawl and preserving the character of Watkin County. The city of Bellingham is best equipped to handle this additional growth due to its urban growth areas, UGA reserves, and the development flexibility offered by House Bill eleven ten. Additionally, Bellingham is projected to take on sixty percent of employment growth for the county, which combined with taking on less than forty-five percent of population growth, is a recipe for sprawl. Unlike smaller cities, Bellingham has ample buildable lands, fewer geographic constraints, and established infrastructure that can absorb new residency and affordable housing more responsibly and sustainably. By contrast, smaller cities are not positioned to support this level of growth. Many face significant natural barriers, including wetlands, agricultural lands, and floodplains that restrict, restrict their expansion and drive up development costs. Historically, these cities have struggled to develop affordable housing and supportive housing. So projections that they'll be able to support this type of growth now are largely unfounded. Even if growth in these geographically constrained areas is technically possible, it will be financially burdensome, which will make affordable housing goals unrealistic. Finally, allocating growth to rural areas will only create sprawl, driving up future infrastructure costs and impacting rural character. Avoiding these infrastructure costs upfront does not make them disappear. It merely delays and amplifies them, passing the burden on to future residents and imposing higher human cost. Increased commuter traffic alone will strain road networks and transit, while small water associations and individual property owners will face steep costs to address water supply needs. In short, concentrating more of the population growth in Bellingham aligns better with our county's goals of limiting sprawl and preserving rural. In short, concentrating more of the population growth in Bellingham aligns better with our county's goals of limiting sprawl and preserving rural and agricultural lands. Bellingham simply has better capacity to develop affordably, responsibly, and in a way that preserves rural and small city integrity. Lastly, I'd like to note that. Only looking at past trends for future. Population allocation doesn't isn't. A great way to go about planning for the future. So, thank you again for considering these adjustments to the population growth projections and the comprehensive plan update.
Being no other hands, there are no other speakers. Oh. I have David Stahlheim. David Stahlheim, would you like to provide further comment?
Yes, I would. I just unmuted. Thank you. David Stahlheim, Watcom Environmental Council. At an August meeting of local elected officials, an elected official said. Growth is inevitable and eventually all the cities will likely grow into one another. Well, growth might be inevitable. We can and should do something to make sure cities don't grow. Into one another. I don't think that is the vision of what anyone in our community wants. It's not clear why this action is before the planning commission at this time. It is not a requirement of the Growth Management Act to make preliminary allocations. It is premature and unnecessary. We should be focusing on the GMA goals like some of the previous speakers already said. We should be developing plans based on the most likely growth forecast. Not an amalgamation of requests from each local government that has been has not been filtered for any compliance with these goals. City and county planners have good intentions as they bring this forward. City planners are the voices that champion their city as directed by their elected officials. Planners would like to see growth shift from rural and resource lands to urban areas. Planners believe growth directed to urban areas responds better to climate goals. Planners are working to respond to housing affordability issues. But an oversupply of growth directed to urban areas will not address affordability and will not address rural development. Unless other measures are in place to make that happen. And expanding urban growth areas due to inflated expectations of growth. Can lead to loss of resource lands and open space and result in climate impacts. It is the county's authority to designate urban growth areas based on the growth projection from O F M. When you consider allocations of that growth, it is important to remember that the county does not have land use authority within city limits. The county sets an overall growth projection and then allocates that growth to urban and other areas. When you allocate growth to an urban area, the city will come back with a plan to accommodate that growth. The county can set conditions for U G A expansion, but cannot dictate land use decisions within the city. In two thousand fourteen, the county council set an expectation that any urban growth area expansion. Would require the transfer of development rights from rural or resource lands. In two thousand sixteen, the urban growth areas for Ferndale, Linden and Nuxack were expanded. Was an interlocal agreement adopted that transferred development rights? The answer to that is no. The Office of Financial Management or O F M is required by statute to identify the most likely population projection for the county. Which is the middle or medium range. Pointed out in our letter, their forecast has consistently been on target. If anything, they have forecasts a little high. The action presented to you is nineteen percent more than the most likely growth projection. We should be planning on a countywide basis around O F M medium. Thank you for your time and I'd be happy to answer your questions regarding our letter.
Robert Carmichael. You wish to speak at this time?
Thank you. My name is Bob Carmichael. I represent. Kai Tech USA, which is the owner of a significant portion of the area designated as the North Bellingham U G A. My clients watch this process unfold. And one of the things that I haven't heard a lot about, I've heard a little bit, but not a lot about tonight is the. Housing affordability crisis. And that is a crisis which has been born from not planning for growth, not planning for the growth that has come. And due to supply and demand, we simply don't have enough housing available. That has resulted in homelessness, families who are unable to buy houses. One of the things I wanted to mention and we if the records left open will supply this information. There is a recent report done by the University of Washington Center for Real Estate Research. It's a it's a study called the State of the States Housing dated October twenty twenty four. And it focuses on supply and affordability in Washington State. And one of the conclusions it's. Reached is that home buying affordability. Has decreased significantly across Washington's major regional cities. This is a quote, Bellingham, Seattle, Spokane, Tacoma, Vancouver and Yakima all declined in affordability. From the second quarter of twenty twenty one to the second quarter of twenty twenty four. So if we thought we had a housing affordability problem in the early twenties, we've really got one now. I it when you get this material, if you do, I encourage you to look at page twenty seven, which is a bar chart. Showing how much the decrease has actually occurred. It shows data from Bellingham, Seattle, Spokane, Tacoma, Vancouver and Yakima. Bellingham's affordability is by far the lowest of any of those cities, based on the median income of the people who live here. Bellingham's is with one hundred being something that you shoot for as affordable. All the others are unaffordable in the sixty to seventy range. Bellingham is at forty. Just to give you an idea how of how unaffordable things are, which I think most of you know because you live here. This is a function of not having properly planned in the past. I've been a witness to. These processes for more than twenty years and we're doing some of the same things, making some of the same mistakes. That we've made in the past by not. Assigning a higher growth rate. I don't have time to get into all the explanations, but I concur with the speakers about we're. Risking having too much growth in the rural areas again, more sprawl and that serves no one. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no one else online that wishes to speak. Uh, there are no other speakers. Alvin?
Okay, I see no other speakers. I'll close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearings closed. Commissioners, what would you like to do? I'm I'm guessing there are a lot of questions, but go ahead, commissioners. Commissioner Masari.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. There's been some comments that we this this action doesn't need to be taken. Currently to approve the the population proposals. Can you speak to that? Why if that's true or not true and?
Yeah, I I would say it's it's true. It's not required. So in the twenty sixteen update, I mentioned some of the small cities. Developed this idea and we pursued this non-binding multi-jurisdictional resolution at that time. And again, part of that had to do with. In order, you know, we're supposed to have capital facility plans adopted. Pretty much at the same time the comp plan is adopted, if possible, to support the growth. And so it's kind of a parallel. Process with our comp plan and our capital facilities plan hopefully. And they some of the small cities at that time were concerned that they were spending funds and I think it was alluded to tonight. And they didn't really have any. Initial indication of what other folks wanted to. You know, have for population projection, what other jurisdictions wanted to have for population projection. So we kind of did that discussion back then. At that time, the county council adopted that non-binding multi-jurisdictional resolution in twenty fourteen. In advance of the E I S and in advance of the comp plan. And that was changed, I think, changed a little bit at the end. So we've discussed kind of doing a similar process this time. This time we do have one additional factor. That, you know, the countywide population. Projection goes into this housing for all planning tool, which then distributes housing to all the communities. And so. And that's another factor to consider, but it's it's correct. It's not required.
Can I ask a follow up?
Yeah, go ahead.
What so so what does the process look differently if we if we adopt this now versus if we adopt this later on in the process?
Well, I I think it gets down to that, you know, concern that some of the cities had that, you know, they. They don't have an indication, you know, from the from the county of what direction they might want to go. I I don't know, Alex. From Blaine, you kind of referenced that. I don't know if you want to chip in here or any other of the cities want to. Talk about that. Is Alex still on?
I mean, Matt, I can talk about a little bit. Mike's phone from City of Ferndale. While it may not be specifically spelled out in law, we need something to use to plan. I can't go through and look at my U G A to determine if I can meet twelve twenty requirements. Which again is like, you know, meeting requirements for different income bands, which are then correlated to different types of housing types. Which correlates to my zoning. I can't do that unless I know what I'm trying to do. I have to have a number that I go towards. While it may not be necessary to lock it in, the more I hear and read things. I I don't necessarily disagree with what the folks are saying. You don't have to adopt it now, but we need to set a target that we work to do our planning on. And it's not just for capital facilities, but that's super important for, you know, folks that are looking at their wastewater treatment plants and water treatment plants. It it's actually like how we meet House Bill twelve twenty. And, you know, I would throw off that the legislation H B twelve twenty is new enough. That they still haven't figured out all the issues with it. And this is one of the inherent issues with it. We need to have a process and a way to actually plan for and accommodate the different housing types. And if we don't have a target, then I'm I'm doing a shoot shot in the dark or I'm redoing the work. And this also helps us, I think, with the CIPA process too.
All right, Commissioner James, go ahead.
Um, I can understand the small. Cities and the county rural areas wanting to have some certainty going forward. What I see though is if we overshot by nineteen percent growth in in rural areas, we need to think about this very carefully. Moreover, I believe that at least personally, I want to see how the S works out. I mean, Sue Mass is literally building in the middle of a of a lake. They're flooded regularly. What sense is it going to make to to build more in an area that's inherently indefensible against environmental factors? Some of the flood zone areas in the Birch Bay area and other places. I I really think we need to look at that E I S information before we make any recommendations about population. And I would be very reluctant to exceed dramatically and some of these are dramatic excess. Over what the O F M is projected, which has been a very responsible, very accurate predictor of growth. So I'm I would be very uncomfortable approving this this evening and hope that we can come back to it at a time when we have more information. And and some serious thought. I mean, I think each of these folks have done their best job at presenting data. But it's our job to put that in a larger context. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
I think Frank took the words right out of my mouth. He had an excellent way of conveying exactly what I was feeling, the sentiments of needing a little bit more information. Especially with the required elements of the new climate change element for House Bill eleven eighty one. So again, why would we want to build more housing units on a on a on a lake? And Sue Mass and just understanding the impacts of frontline communities and how folks have been migrating to those rural communities for affordability. Even if their jobs are here or in Bellingham or other cities. So I'd also like to know if the comprehensive planning of cities and the targeted. Projections also include any of the carbon reduction and some of the goals that are associated with those. Buildings for energy codes and how we are going to do housing for all. Where where are we going to be sourcing the materials? How are we going to be building? So just kind of maybe more information before. Adopting or passing a resolution is my concern, as well as just more of the community involvement. I would like to know more from people who live in those areas versus just the city staff and planners that are pulling data from computers.
Commissioner Hanson.
Uh, thank you. I agree. We shouldn't make a decision on this, but I wonder if there'd be some mechanism whereby. We can give the people in the multi-jurisdictional group some feedback. About the ways in which the decision preliminary decisions they made are not in compliance with. Growth Management Act guidance. Because I I went through and I found several places that specific things were not in line with the mandate we have to implement the Growth Management Act. And I see one overriding issue and that is in these growth allocations. They in rural and rural areas and small communities. The population allocation is from two to four times greater than the job allocation. So. To 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 me, that provides an increasing nightmare of transportation. Clogging down Meridian, I five and Baker Highway of putting more people in these bed. These bedroom communities and the Growth Management Act tells us, don't do that. Put people where the jobs are. And so and having all these big commutes with with people of lower means. They're going to be, it's going to put stress on their lives and on their families, going to put a stress on the environment because of the environmental impacts of all. All this vehicle use and the Growth Management Act wants us. To put people close to their jobs where they can use public transportation. So this whole approach to me contravenes. The mandates of the Growth Management Act. So I I agree, we shouldn't we shouldn't approve this, but I wonder if there's a mechanism. Where we can give them some feedback to help help refine their approach.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
Yeah, I'm Jim to follow up. Are you aware of any other counties that have a sort of mechanism that are in the same kind of boat? Either Skagit Island or the other counties that are due in twenty twenty six. And that is not just addressed to Jim, that's to all the commissioners and anyone in this room that would like to just see if we've made some observation or learning. Opportunities from other counties that might be in similar circumstances.
Matt, are are you able to answer that one?
Well, I mean, you certainly could, you know, if you want to maybe in, I don't know if it'd be tonight or in December, but you could certainly have discussion, make motions. You know, your, I think your role is advising the county council, but you know. You could you could provide your perspective on things for cities in the county, you know, urban growth areas, but. If they could take that under advisement and review that, they're, you know, officials and so forth.
So Sunni had the question about models from other adjacent counties and how they seem to be handling this dilemma.
Well, I I just looked at King County just today and they actually. Put their housing needs in the countywide planning policies. Which is, you know, a non-binding resolution is what it says. It's, you know, you can you can change it. It's explicit in there. Countywide planning policies, especially in King County are very difficult to change because they have so many cities and jurisdictions and so forth, but. They put those housing needs in their countywide planning policies prior to their draft E I S and prior to adoption. So. I don't think, you know, what we're saying here is unheard of or, you know, that type of thing, even in E I S, you. We're not doing this, but you could identify a preferred alternative in the E I S, you know, so. It this is not required to do this and and but it's, you know, also not unheard of to do it, you know, to give some. Some initial preliminary thought process. Andrew, do you have something to?
Yeah, could I sign in on this?
Yeah.
Thanks, man. Hi, everyone. Andrew Oliver here with Leland Consulting Group. Thanks, Matt. Hi, everyone. Andrew Oliver here with Leland Consulting Group. Um. Um, part of the consulting team working for the county on this comp plan and uh, in this process. I've been pretty involved with the city county planner group of everyone you've met tonight. Um, working through these allocations and this whole um, this whole process. And I I was just thinking as as far as other counties go, and I wanted to piggyback on what um, Mike said a minute ago. Which is that there is um, this new requirement from HB twelve twenty. To a to for counties to allocate housing needs at different income levels to jurisdictions. And there there does eventually have to be some form of uh, you know, establishment of those targets. Now, it doesn't necessarily have to be based on, you know, the population projections uh, that we've brought for tonight. Uh, if we have, you know, looked at a range of scenarios for the EIS and what that would mean for these income bands. Uh, for each jurisdiction, but the jurisdictions are going to be required in their own comprehensive plan to show land capacity, not only for their overall. Population and employment growth, but also for housing growth at various income levels. And that's in the Commerce's HB twelve twenty framework is um, is uh, coordinated with. Uh, the uh, housing types and land uses. Uh, so you know, in a very high level, the idea is, you know, a certain level of density. Allows multifamily housing, which can provide affordability to lower income groups. That's very broad generalization of the process. So um, anyway, as part of that process, uh, there does have to be some decision that comes from the county in some form. Uh, and in speaking with the Department of Commerce about this, uh, they've mentioned, you know, several options. As Matt said, some counties such as King and Snohomish. Um, added these targets at various income bands to their countywide planning policies. Uh, other counties uh, like Skagit just adopted a resolution uh, at the county level, but they did not amend the countywide planning policy. So there's leeway, the Department of Commerce doesn't really have a recommended or preferred method for counties to do this, but there will be at least at some point in this process. As Michael said, a need for cities to have those, especially the income band targets set so that they can um, do their planning and show. Uh, compliance with HB twelve twenty, and they need to be set at the countywide level because the targets come from Commerce at the countywide level and they have to all add up. Uh, in all jurisdictions. So that is one consideration eventually in this, you know, in the next few months here, um, that at least as far as the housing needs by income go, there has to be some. Some decision on those. Um, but again, it doesn't obviously have to be today and um, there's some flexibility.
Andrew, do you know where Skagit? Are they doing an environmental impact statement? Do you know?
I do not know if they are.
Okay.
They they also, they they adopt their targets and then they uh, they they adjust them slightly uh, through a second resolution. Because some uh, rural considerations.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
Yeah, to follow up, Andrew, thank you so much for that information. Um, and I do know that Skagit does have their climate um, public hearing soon. Um, if we don't have to make a decision tonight, would there be a final deadline, whether that be this December or another working session? Just a timeframe for us to be able to pull some more data, work um, on finding out ways to make a better formed decision. Do you know of a hard, like a hard deadline, a hard stop?
There's there's really no hard deadline on us. It's really, um, you know, the county and the cities working together to, you know. People having some initial or some preliminary um, figures to work with as they do, you know. Start to do their capital facility planning and other things. So um, yeah, there's not a, not a hard deadline. I don't know if any other cities have comments or thoughts on. On that.
Commissioner Eisenberg, do you have another question?
Yeah, just to to follow up then, if there's no need to make a decision tonight, would we have to make a motion to either table this for the next session? Or what would, what would the outcome of tonight's meeting be if we didn't, if we weren't to be able to provide the low, middle or high target from the OFM population growth numbers?
Yeah, I think you could continue this. You'd have to decide if you want to continue the hearing or continue the work session, you know, to the December. I think it's, is it December twelfth, Eileen?
Yes.
And and Matt, so we we closed the public hearing, so we don't have to have another um, public hearing, but um. We uh, could carry it over if the commissioners would like to do that. Commissioner Hanson.
No, you're muted, Andrew.
Beat my lips, beat my lips. Uh, I just wanted to point out another factor, another fallacy in this uh. Resolution brought forward is that it jettisoned the lower population growth all as an alternative. And instead gave us the no growth alternative, which was dead on arrival. So that doesn't seem right to me. I think that we should be looking at the low, middle and high alternatives when we're discussing this. Or make particularly if we're making any decisions.
Commissioner James.
Yes, I I I think I'd be prepared to move that we continue this discussion, this this work session to the December meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this uh, discussion at the December meeting. Are there any uh, comments from the commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Masari.
Um, if if we're planning to take it over to the next meeting, which I'm I'm not opposed to that, do. Will we have any kind of game plan on on uh, goals for that meeting, anything to come prepared with? I just want to make sure that the next time, you know, we we have maybe some kind of target or goal that we're we're working on.
Commissioner Hanson.
Appreciate that comment. I'd like to see us go through these uh, allocations one. When uh, jurisdiction by jurisdiction by jurisdiction and look at how they are compliant or deeply flawed. And then provide feedback to the other public entities in that fashion.
So um, Commissioner Hanson made a good point, and I think that as planning commission weekend. When we get to this next meeting, we know we're going to be working on it and that I think that can be brought up. I don't think it needs to be part of the motion, but I think that's. More or less what all of us are having in mind that we want to get a good look at it. Go ahead, Commissioner James.
Uh, would it be possibly copies of those slide sets? It would be, it'd be very, very helpful, I think, to get the, I I I took extensive notes. I got six pages of notes here, but it would be nice to make sure for accuracy to actually get the information that was provided in 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 its precision.
I agree.
Yeah, can you provide that for us, Matt? I saw your head nodding.
I think Eileen will do that, yeah.
Yes, um, these presentations will be available on uh, the website. On the planning mission um, comments page, it will have the presentations available tomorrow morning. I will also send out the PDFs. Uh, all of you and Matt, if you can send me the re- the um. The rural one.
Yes, I will do that. Yeah.
But yes, that's more.
Thank you.
So um. Is there anything that you would want for additional information from the cities or the county uh, for that December twelfth meeting? Or do you feel like you have? Chris, do you have a? Okay.
So um.
I I did say, I I I think those uh, if if we get the actual copies of the slides, that'd be adequate for me.
Okay.
Um, we have, so we have a motion on the floor and and um, I'd like us to uh, go ahead and vote on the motion unless someone has a. A for or against the motion. Um, but if not, we should vote on that and then we can ask Matt. For the things that we would like for the next, for the next meeting. So I'm not seeing anybody that wants to speak for or against the motion. Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Eisenberg.
Yeah, yeah, uh, pa- yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Masari.
Yes.
Ben Dalen.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, and so um, we were I asking Matt what we would like to have, so uh, we can continue that discussion. Anybody has more items to add?
Commissioner Van Dalen has a panel.
Oh. And go ahead, uh, commi- Commissioner Van Dalen, I, oh, I see your hand, just, that's about all. Go ahead.
I could put a yellow glove on and maybe it would look better, you know? No, I just wanted to make a plug, being from the North County area, for all the small cities. Uh, knowing a lot of these people, having worked in the building departments there with them, uh, Birch Bay. Blaine, Sumas, Nookzak, Everson, uh, we can't ignore these small cities and just tell them to stop and and go away. I I just want to put that plug in there that this does help them and their resources aren't that as big as like a city like Bellingham either. We know there's a difference in population and size and everything, and we just can't forget there's these thousands of people that do live in these areas. And I just, as we have a whole month to go before we have our next meeting, I just want to make sure we don't ignore these uh, what these people need. There are small departments, there's not a lot of people working in these cities and they and they do need, they do need a little direction.
Commissioner James.
I don't think anybody's telling to stop and go away at all. I think we we're looking at constructive engagement and and trying to help as best we can. So I I I hope that's the intent of everybody. It certainly is my intent.
Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah, a couple of discreet questions for the different jurisdictions and maybe the county that can answer them. But when they're talking about housing units in Birch Bay and populate and residential capacity. What's the dynamic between the vacation rentals and the permanent residences? And what what the planning would be for uh, additional growth in terms of residential capacity and how much of that would be going to. Actual county residents and how much would be going to vacation homes?
Yeah.
That would be of interest.
We do have a, you know, vacancy rate um, kind of baked into our land capacity analysis. And so the vacancy rate in Birch Bay has historically been higher. So um, you know, that kind of addresses things that, you know, are not, you know, available for year-round occupants, that type of thing.
So they are to make, so they are just uh, making a distinction when they're talking about growth. Okay. The other other thing is is when we're talking to Everson saying, they're saying the UGA is not in the floodplain. And what I would like to know is what floodplain they're talking about, that a hundred-year floodplain is not in or the ten-year floodplain or the thousand-year floodplain? Cause I think all of Everson is in the floodplain. And in fact, I had conversations with uh. Staff from River and Flood and they indicated there could be a uh, concern about uh, some plans they're making for Ringdike. Around Everson and the UGA expansion and and the two not working well together. In fact, I was expecting that you all would have a letter from River and Flood already about that, but I guess it didn't, didn't happen. Um, or hadn't got through the pipeline, so that's one concern. The other one is Linden. Uh, they re- uh, basically they don't have a water right. They have a MOU that they made in two thousand and four with the Department of Ecology. That gave that uh, gave them a permission to use water they had no right to. And that that you, that amount of water was supposed to max out at sixteen point three cubic feet per second. This year. So I guess I want to know from them if they're planning on on expansion, a population expansive, expansion. How that, how that corresponds to the res- to the requirement in the Growth Management Act. That one have legally accessible water to issue a bu- building permit. That's when they might want to look at. Maybe they got it figured out, I hope so.
So are are we thinking um, so flood, flood is an issue. Um, so I'm wondering maybe for uh, December if. Maybe it could be Everson, Nookzak, Sumas comes back with some more information on flood and maybe um, Dave Linden could. Address the water issue on the twelfth. Would that be possible? Okay, I'm gonna assume that's possible. Did you, did you have any? Or or Linden, yeah, okay, seeing a thumbs up from.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely address that.
Okay, great.
Hey, um, Matt, uh, Roland Harper, city planner here. Um, just to note, the the maps for Everson, Nookzak and Sumas all had the FEMA hundred-year floodplain mapped. Uh, mapping included on the the maps that are in the the proposal. So uh, commissioners should be able to look at those pretty directly. And just to answer the one question, yes, Everson has um, hundreds of acres. To the south of the Nookzak River that are up and out of the hundred-year floodplain, out of the five hundred-year floodplain. So there's safe ground for Everson to grow, thankfully.
Thank you so much.
And part of the interesting uh, part of this is that we have existing flood maps. And FEMA is in the middle of a process of updating the flood maps, which they've been doing for years. I think every time we get a flood, it kind of, we have to recalibrate. Um, so there are draft maps, but you know, they're not finalized. They may not be finalized for several years. I don't, I don't know, so.
Commissioner Hanson, did you have another question? You had your hand up still.
Thank you. I think so, those are prob- those are probably most outstanding that aren't um, that don't run cross jurisdictions. About the 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 issue about putting jobs and people in the same places.
Okay. Commissioner James.
Sorry, I know we were almost done. Um, one of the things that I think might be quite helpful would be. The emergency preparedness people, I I actually work with them. And one of the, I think the most realistic scenario for a, for an environmental crisis is actually a a rain on snow event. In the mountains that might lead to a a debris torrent into the river, leading to a temporary uh, dam. That would saturate and then blow out and would probably come down and uh, through Demming, through uh, Everson, all those places. And have very substantial impacts. Um, we are seeing increasing climate change. I mean, the last few days, we've had unseasonable rain, um, rain like we typically don't see. I would love to have some input from someone about the, the range of possibilities with with the climate change that is going on. Like I say, at least working with the emergency preparedness folks I've worked with in my role as a health officer. Uh, that's been the most likely scenario of of a major environmental catastrophe. Um, and i- if that's planned into this, because that would be a a a probably a bigger wall of water. Than we would see with any of the traditional floodplains. Uh, and it would be interesting just to hear if there's a, if there's consideration of that, how likely it might be. Or how, how big an impact something like that might be. I I know there's a probably a range of substantial range of of those things. But some idea beyond just the conventional recalibrated flooding uh, maps that we see. Particularly in shoreline areas, though. I mean, I think that uh, and even with sea rise, I know I was shocked at the, the map near where my house is. Uh, now, we built a new house recently, we had to make it four feet higher than where the old one was because it's, it's only twenty, twenty feet above the mean high tide. And it now needs to be in Bellingham twenty-four feet above the mean high tide. Um, so I think those are things we might want to consider as well if we could get more information about them. Uh, Matt, are, is is there such information, you know, the emergency preparedness folks?
Well, uh, we do have a a climate manager in the county now in Public Works. And uh, there's also um, another staff person, senior planner who's working particularly on that issue. Uh, that we might be able to see if they'd be available, you know, for the twelfth, so.
Thank you.
We can reach out to them.
Thank you.
Any other comments, commissioners, thoughts? Being no hands coming up, um, we have no unfinished business that I'm aware of. So the meeting will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Everybody.